I got it now. You have six present mayor. All the woman Tapman and all the woman Reed did not answer.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Someone give me a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Mayor.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of the end time of nine thirty because it does not align with our ordinance.
That's what, say that again, please?
I said, I'm making a motion to accept the agenda with amendment to the end time because we do not have an end time in our ordinance. To remove the nine thirty end time.
No, we're not, we're not removing the nine thirty close of the meeting. That's, that's, that, that remains. Now, if you want to make a motion to approve the agenda as it is, then that's fine. So can I get a motion, somebody, I don't care who it is. A motion to approve the agenda. I'm trying to get.
Can I raise my hand?
I have my hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
All woman, all woman deals.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for October fifteenth. Presentation of the unapproved minutes, minutes for a public hearing for nine twenty eight. Special board member meeting for nine twenty eight. Um, special meeting for ten one and regular board meeting for ten one. And special, I'm not adding it. Special BOA meeting ten eight.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Um.
Aye.
Order mayor.
Are there any opposites?
Point of order mayor.
I'm sorry, but we in the midst of voting.
Just, I mean, it, it sounds very interesting to vote on unapproved minutes and we have not approved the agenda. We haven't approved the agenda and she, the motion was for minutes, approval minutes. Yeah, okay.
Would you rephrase your motion, baby, just for the, all woman, just for the approval of the agenda? Not, not the unapproved minutes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the agenda for October the fifteenth, two thousand twenty, regular board meeting.
There's a second.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposites may.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Uh, call, call roll, because I don't know who said what.
Okay, all the woman West. All the woman West, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No.
All the woman Tapman, oh, she's not here. Oh, you, okay. Okay, yes. All the woman Reed.
Nay.
Alderman Carroll. I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. All the woman, Alderman Thomas.
Yes.
Alderman Christian.
Yes.
All the woman Deals.
Yes.
All the woman Avant Elliott.
No.
Okay. Four yes and four no, man.
All right, then I vote yes, so let's proceed. Uh, presentation of unapproved minutes.
I got my hand up, I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, I, I, I'm sorry, there's only one second. All right, Alderman Thomas, I'm sorry.
All right, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the public hearing on nine twenty eight, twenty twenty. The special board of Alderman meeting on nine twenty eight, twenty twenty. The emergency special meeting on ten one, twenty twenty. And the regular board of Alderman meeting on ten one, twenty twenty. And the special board of Alderman meeting on ten eight, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, mayor.
All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposes may. As have it. At this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to the public for their comments.
This is Wanda Lane, ninety nine hundred Martinville, ninety nine hundred block of Martinville. Um, mayor, I was reviewing the, um, the workshop from Mr. Kelly and he made motion, made a mention of the parks grant. And I want to know who gave the direction to Tina Zimmerman to apply for a park grant, grant on the behalf of the city of Belle Fountain neighbors. Did you do that?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so I, I would like to know who did it. Because, um, she, whatever direction, whoever gave her direction to do that, I don't know who was responsible for making sure everything was submitted on time and correctly, but it wasn't. And as a result of that, the city has lost four hundred ten thousand five hundred dollars because the paperwork was not submitted properly. There was a resolution that had to be included. The resolution was included blank. No signature, no sign from the city clerk, no seal from the city. And I am appalled that these five alderpeople who voted to approve the resolution in the August twelfth illegal meeting, which is still being investigated at the attorney general's office, number one. Uh, somebody didn't know better, but everybody knows everything. But as a result of that, the meeting is tomorrow. We are, we have now lost four hundred ten thousand five hundred dollars. And that was money that, according to the application, was going to be used to repair the swimming pool and other things related to the rec center. I think that somebody needs to be held accountable for the city losing four hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. Because the person who submitted this paperwork did so without the authorization of the city of Belle Fountain neighbors. Now, I don't know where we go from there, from here, but I think as a citizen, we deserve better than this. We don't have this kind of money to just throw around and to lose. So I will, if no one wants to take responsibility for it, I'll take responsibility for it. And I'll do my investigation. And someone's gonna answer for it. And yes, I'm very upset about it. Because there's too many people trying to do too many things that they are unauthorized to do. And it has now cost our city four hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. And we don't have an opportunity to reapply until the first Monday in June of the year twenty twenty one.
Point of order, mayor.
Someone needs to be held, someone needs to be held responsible for it.
Ms. Lane has now been speaking for almost five minutes.
No, she hasn't.
Yes, she has. I've been in there timing.
I'm overruled, no, no, I'm timing it too.
Okay, and so how much time do you have?
Three minutes just hit right now.
Okay, your time is up.
Mister, uh, 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 mayor, I don't care if it's three minutes, five minutes, or fifteen minutes. It's four hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars that we are not.
The problem, that is part of the problem right now.
Unless you're out of order.
Is that you feel you can do anything you want to do and the mayor allows you to do that.
I did not lose, I did not lose four hundred and ten thousand dollars.
I don't care, Ms. Lane.
Ms. Lane, let me handle it, let me handle it.
Yeah, you, you try to handle it.
You, you're out of order.
Yes, sir, and so are you and Ms. Lane. And I will not stop talking until you recognize that I called for a point of order because she has been talking over her three minutes.
I recognize your point of order.
Which is what she does at every meeting. And you allow it at every meeting and it needs to stop.
All right, you're still talking, so.
Yes, sir, I am, and I will continue to do so until you recognize my point of order.
I recognize.
Which is a valid point of order. It's valid, so you have no reason not to recognize it.
I did, and you're still talking, David, and you're still talking.
I'd like to talk as much as Ms. Lane does apparently.
Anyone else that want to speak in front of the public, please?
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I have my hand up, I just wanted to, um, I think that there is a little bit confusion around the community block grant which you were handling, that she's confusing with the resolution.
No, I'm not.
The community block grant was not being handled by the resolution that Tina Zimmerman did, so.
Yes, it was, too.
No, it was not. Check the resolution, check the resolution, that was not being handled by that person. So that's misinformation.
We get to the bottom of it, all right. Anyone else in the public who wishes to speak?
Yes, this is CJ from nine twenty Fontaine Place, and I have two concern, well, two questions, two issues I'm concerned about. The first one is, the committees that are made up of the alderpeople, such as the Ways and Means, the Ways and Means Committee, they had a meeting earlier this evening, I believe. Will those be published on the Belle Fountain neighbors website so that the public can attend these committee meetings? And then my second issue for tonight is the new market that's going up on Belle Fountain. The gateway, I think it's called the gateway market, I wanted to know, A, are they allowed to sell tobacco products? B, are they allowed to sell alcohol products? C, are they gonna have a full kitchen and would they be cooking on the premises?
Nope.
And that's my only concerns.
Joe Rayburn would have to answer that. Joe, would you speak to that, please? We'll get back to you on that. Your points were taken, man. And you are, did you give your name and address?
Yes, it's CJ Mayberry, nine twenty Fontaine Place, I did give it.
Okay, we'll get to you on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? All right, then we will proceed. The approval of the, no, the, uh, city treasurer's report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, for my report, it's based on September twenty twenty, the end of month. There was three point three million dollars in funds and each of the months in total. Uh, some of the key points that I wanted to point out as it relates to the finances and the treasurer's function, at least, was the fact that currently the audit is taking place. We've had field auditors in the office and we've been in discussion with them concerning the different things, the different findings or potential findings across these last weeks. In addition to that, when it comes to revenue, sales tax revenue is unexpectedly up by twelve percent compared to the budget. However, licenses, fines, and recreational center activity is down sixty nine percent as expected due to COVID. However, overall, the current revenue was slightly above budget by five percent for revenue, total revenue. As it relates to expenditures, the expense allocations across departments and funds are still being reconciled year to date as I work with the finance clerk to ensure that each of the payables are, are entered across the months while we're still providing the backup documentation for the audit for last fiscal year. In addition to that, indirect expenses, expenses as a, as a whole are below budget by twenty five percent. And that's directly related to COVID and not participating in a hundred percent of all of activities that were expected. Some of the driver, other drivers with the expenditures is the fact that we have insurance that was higher than budgeted by roughly thirteen percent. And, uh, see, in-person services are trending below the budget, as I stated, due to the pandemic. But overall, we're still at a profit position. As far as resources are concerned, not including the CARES Act grant that was voted on previously, I think it was the previous meetings. Other than that, cash on hand with the, with considering all of the financial obligations are liquid and cover all immediate expenses for the city. So there is no risk in not being able to cover expenses. That basically will conclude the report.
All right, thank you. Alderman Carroll.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Do you, by chance, know how much like revenue comes from the rulers market and Dollar General and all of that, specifically how much they make each year? Or Family Dollar, Family Dollar, whatever it is.
Specifically, I do not have that breakdown, no.
Is there any way that anybody could get that?
I can make a request to the finance clerk to see if, if she has a breakdown of that information.
Could it be possible to do the whole Bissell Hills shopping area for every, every, I think it's rulers, Metro PCS, Family Dollar, Rosa Nail Place, Fish and Chicken, and Grace's Wings?
That's something that I can ask because I know the way that the revenue is deposited is not based on individual properties. But I can have a conversation with her to see.
I, I guess what I'm, I'm getting at, because there's a lot of problems up there. And, um, you know, I would like to bring up for the board to consider maybe, and I don't, and the reason why I'm asking is if it would even be financially feasible to do something like that. But to get that area designated as a community improvement district and levy like maybe a half a cent or a cent sales tax to actually, you know, hire more police officers specifically for that area. There's a lot of crime, drug dealing, that sort of thing. And, and, and so that's basically the, the basis for, for wanting those figures. So if it would even be feasible to, to move forward with something like that.
Well, that's, that's, that's a question for someone else to answer. Alderman Thomas.
Well, who, who can answer that?
You're muted, Alderman Thomas.
Mayor, excuse me, I'm, well, then who can answer that?
Well, when you start talking about crime and all of that, then that's, that's for.
That's, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about get that, that area designated as a community improvement district to levy like an additional half cent or one cent sales tax and using that additional revenue to hire police officers specifically for that area since those, um, businesses won't, you know, hire security guards. So in order to move forward, if that's even feasible, physically feasible to do something like that, if, 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 if we could raise that money or not through the sales tax or not, or if it's just a moot point. So who could, who could get those figures, then?
Hello, chief, is that something that will fall into your wheelhouse?
Are, are you talking about income figures?
I want figures from the total amount of sales from the rulers, all the businesses in the, the Bissell Hills Shopping Center. And to see if, if we get that area designated as a community improvement district and levy an additional half cent or one cent sales tax if it would be, if it would even be feasible to hire like an officer or two just specifically for that area. But in order to know, you know, how much income or, or revenue that that, that could raise, you would need to know, you know, the, the revenue brought in from those, those businesses.
I know exactly what you're talking about. So the, the financial figures will most likely have to come from the city collector because you're talking about income. The, um, the accounting clerk handles accounts payable and payroll only. Number two, and I've seen this model used at other places if the city is interested, is creating a business resource police officer. City of Arnold is, is a good example of that, if you want to look into it, it has become very, very successful. The, the officer or team of officers, the only things that they do are business related. Crime education and things of that nature. So that, that would be, if they would levy a one cent tax for additional police officers, that's probably something that you would want to, you would be interested in doing.
Right, that's exactly, and I think there needs to be a continual police presence up there because, like I said, Clyde Park, there's continual drug dealings going on, there's shoplifting over at Family Dollar. I, I'm sure there's issues over at rulers as well. But if, we could have a dedicated police presence there at that area, maybe that would help with, with clearing, cleaning some of that stuff up.
Sure.
Okay. And then a second question, has anybody considered, or has the city considered refinancing the, the bonds that the, the city has issued? I, I know interest rates have, have gone down and I don't know if that's the same for, for the, for bonds, but, um, and I, I know we're paying a three or four percent interest rate on the, I forgot, two thousand and eight bond, two thousand and nine bond. And I don't know if, if bond interest rates are lower now. Like I said, I, I know that homeowner interest rates have gone down and I don't know if that's the same for, for the bonds interest rate. But is, is that something feasible that we could look at or look into, or would that even make sense?
Yeah, I can follow up with, um, the, the contact I speak with related to bonds and see if that, that makes any sense for.
Okay, and I forget, and I forgot what year, there's, there's two bonds, there's the two thousand and eight, and I think it's two thousand and eight. And there was bonds issued back in, I know those were refinanced and the city saved like three hundred thousand dollars back in two thousand and eight when they were refinanced. But like I said, I think interest rates have gone down and, and if you could check to see if, if it would be feasible to do both and report back at the next BLA meeting.
I can do that.
Thank you very much.
All right, Alderman Elliott. All the woman Elliott.
Yes, um, Treasurer Howard, we kind of got into some conversation about this. But is it possible to revisit the protocols around the issuance of checks based on board approval to ensure that only checks goes out that are board approved? Because that is definitely an internal control issue. So I, I know that we didn't get a chance to get a response related to that. But do you have any influence over that, or is there something that is addressed by the mayor?
As it relates to like the questions that we had on, on email.
Over five hundreds that the check that was issued out that was not board approved, so.
Right, yeah, so I wouldn't have any input on those. Because after the policy, at least, that's why I communicated just from a standpoint.
Okay, so it'll just be an internal control issue regardless of, yeah, okay.
Right, right.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Approved up and bosses over five hundred. Um, all woman Elliott.
Oh, no, my hand is not up for that. It's all the woman Reed.
What is up? All woman Reed.
Thanks, mayor. My motion to pay invoices over five hundred, there are four of them for a total amount of thirty thousand two fifty two and forty two cents. Withholding check four three zero nine one for nine hundred four dollars and forty eight cents. West product is received by the public works director.
All woman deals. All woman deals. Unmute yourself.
Okay, I just did, I apologize. The check that all the woman Reed is speaking about, the items have been purchased and those are for the barriers. There has been a receipt submitted to our finance clerk. And I would like to ask all the woman Reed why she doesn't think that bill needs to be paid.
Um, mayor, I would like to second so the discussion could take place.
Well, I, I mean, I want to know when you're withdrawing that check as well.
We have to do a second.
Huh?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just acknowledging that I'm doing a second and then you have to step down if you want to debate.
I don't want to debate, do you want to debate?
Oh, okay, I thought you was about to ask a question about the check.
Well, I was gonna ask a question about the check, it's been approved, so why are we putting it out if it's been approved?
If it had been approved by who? Did you approve it?
It's been approved by the board.
What you mean, been approved by the board?
Okay.
Actually, what we're doing right now.
That's why we, that's why we get into trouble with our bills because you all pull bills out and, and, and they don't get paid. And then, and then you want to know why this bill isn't paid, it's because you cherry pick these bills when they come to you.
But you pay them anyway, so why, did you authorize, we see, to purchase those signs? Then we'll know where to go from there because at this point, we asked prior to the meeting and our city clerk indicated she was not aware of who approved him to make that purchase because the street department indicated they did not have those items in their possession. So how can somebody walk a receipt?
Excuse me, I have a point of order, so there was a motion.
It was a second, yes. I seconded, so that's why we were in discussion.
Well, I didn't hear the mayor, but y'all go right ahead.
Okay, yeah. So, um, so I was just wondering, how can somebody walk a receipt on to get reimbursed and nobody can say that they authorized it and then is on the agenda for us to approve? So that's a question for you, then that helps us out because we asked questions before the meeting to get clarification and that's how we came to the consensus of moving it off because the street department said they don't even have the items in their possession. And.
Answer that question.
And the city clerk indicated that she did not know who authorized him to make the purchase. So if we have two processes that are unknown, how can we go forth to approve something legitimately without that explanation? So would you approve it, mayor?
Mayor, I can, I can answer that question.
I'm sorry, hold on, let me, let me see what he's saying first.
I'm standing, I'm calling on all woman deals because she has her hand up.
Oh, okay, so you weren't answering the question about whether or not you approved it. You didn't approve it.
Mayor, I can answer that question for you. Can I answer? Okay. Uh, when the eighty-seven hundred was approved, Michael Weezy, because he's previously been doing work for the city with, like he did over in Ward Two, um, when nothing was ever questioned about when he purchased the items then. And there was never a question about why he purchased it or who approved it. When he fixed some of the, um, lights, um, that cover our city, when he's done multiple things over the city and it's never been a question except for now Ward Four, he had purchased these items because he, at that time, before he got pushed back from all the women about Elliot about the, uh, wards over in Ward Four. So as he purchased those and since then, because he's gotten so much harassment and pushback from all the woman Elliot, he's decided not to do the job.
Statement, I have not harassed that man. Please do not say that. Thank you.
I'm just going by the emails.
No, there's no email that shows harassment. Please not.
Okay, that's, that's a matter of opinion. So I'm taking it as harassment and he did too. Okay, so, um, he has decided based on the information that he, that people, that we have in our packet, that he's not going to do the barriers. And I spoke with Mark and Jeff and told them, asked them if they will be able to continue on with the barriers and he said yes. And Michael Weezy will be taking the items to the street department when someone is available. He is not, he sent me a text of them. He is not, he's a person of integrity. He's, uh, he actually was on our planning and zoning. He was one of our, uh, older people before he wasn't elected. And he's not going to steal or take anything away from, from our city. He submitted the, um, the receipts. Everything is there and it should be kept on and paid for.
Okay.
He's the man, he's the man of his word and he has continually done what he said he's gonna do.
I didn't finish getting my answer. I didn't, the mayor never answered my question because all the women deals did not. So if you, if you can allow me to hear a response from the mayor about.
He's not going, he said he wasn't going to step down. So he can't answer.
And so.
No, that's not, that's not a, that's not a debate question.
All woman, all woman, all woman Elliot, you're not running this meeting.
I understand. I made an inquiry about a process for us to approve.
Penny Clark, mute the person, mute.
You, you can't direct her to do that. So I'm just.
Because she's, she's.
You can't mute everybody else. Then you cannot mute that all the person.
Mute you too.
Now I don't, you don't want me to, but let me say this.
All the mayor.
I have my hand up.
I know.
She had her hand up. I'm trying to call you. She stopped talking.
Because you, now that's being rude because I had a question that never got answered. You called on someone that I directed a question to you. My simple question was who authorized him to make the purchase? Did you Mayor authorize him to make the purchase? It was just a yes or no.
No, I didn't authorize it.
Okay, thank you. So then we do not have a person within our city.
Okay, the, uh, I was, I was reading, uh, Alderman Reed's motion. And within her motion, it states that she wants to withhold check number four three zero nine one for nine hundred and four dollars, forty-eight cents. And once the product is received by the public works director, clarification, uh, all the one read you, by what I read, then, uh, we'll just hand over the check once it is confirmed that the, uh, items have been received. Is that, is that not correct by reading your motion?
Yeah, that's, you know, Mike, I already talked with Mike via text today and
Okay.
He said he would give it to him, you know.
Okay.
My, my thing is, it's not about Michael or anything like that, um, but it's about just our processes in the city. You know, that we don't pay for a thousand dollars worth of something and have it sitting at our home. I understand there are signs, but the city should be purchasing product for the city. I mean, I can go out and, and go buy police cars if I wanted to because I think all of them should be brand new, but the city's not going to reimburse me for that. You know what I'm saying? It's just there's a process that we have and we should be purchasing things for the city, especially when it's over five hundred by purchasing people in the city.
Right. And I understand that, but I was just getting to understand you in agreement with paying, with paying the check. You're not saying that we're not going to pay you.
Right.
Okay. Once we receive, once it's received and it's verified.
And Mark says he got it.
And Mark says you got it. I'm good with that. Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm good with that too. Uh, all woman read, your hands up, uh, and Thomas, your hands still up. You done?
Yeah, I talked with Thomas.
Huh? All right.
I said what I wanted to say with Alderman, Thomas Mayor.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you. Uh, Madam Craig, where are we now?
We are now at, we just finished approving over five hundred. So you would go to the city collector. I'm sorry, we need a vote.
Okay.
My bad.
Is there a mo, is there a motion to approve the, the, uh, the motion with the, uh, correction that were made by all woman read?
Mayor, we've already motioned and seconded it and debated it. We're just ready to vote. So we, we could have a roll call vote now.
Okay. All the women about Elliot?
Yes.
All the women deals?
Yes.
Alderman Christian?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Thomas?
Yes.
Alderman Carol?
Yes.
All the woman Reed?
Yes.
All the woman Tatman?
Yes.
All the woman West?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Uh, the collectors, uh, collectors report.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm going to do the collector's report for September twenty twenty. The capital improvement tax current amount was seventy-four thousand, forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Year to date total, one hundred eighty thousand. What happened? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, cause I'll have to, I don't know why, um, okay. The cigarette tax, current amount, four thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and forty-one cents. Year to date total, eight thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars. The motor field tax, current month, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Year to date total, sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Utility tax, current month for September is twenty thousand, thirty-two dollars, nineteen cents. Year to date total, two hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred seven dollars. Motor vehicle tax, fourteen thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars and forty-four cents. Year to date total, forty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty. Personal property, real estate and sewer tax, twenty-eight thousand, eight thirty-five, seventy-three. Year to date total, eighty-two thousand, eight oh three. Road, road and bridge fund, current month, one thousand, four hundred seventy-six dollars, eighty-two cents. Year to date total, four thousand, seven oh five. Sales tax, year to date total, one hundred twelve dollars, one hundred twelve thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. County public sales tax, safety sales tax, R P, for the month, fifty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Year to date total, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred three dollars. And the last one is financial institution taxes. Current month, one sixty-seven, three forty, thirty-eight. Year to date total, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred forty dollars and thirty-eight cents. The current total month for September is three hundred ninety-five thousand and ten dollars. And the year to date total for as of September twenty twenty is one million, three hundred ten thousand and three hundred thirteen, three, one, that one million, three hundred ten, three hundred eleven thou, thousand dollars.
That concludes your report.
That concludes it. That's it. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Uh, all woman Elliot.
Um, Kathy, I sent the email about the, um, liquor license. I didn't get a response.
Um, when did you send? I didn't get any miss, uh, email from you regarding the liquor licenses. Is this something that you sent back way back in August that you're referring to?
It was just, um, yesterday, I believe. Fran was.
I didn't check my emails yesterday, so I wouldn't, uh, wouldn't have received that message. I will check and respond back to you.
It's okay. Um, I'm, I was just trying to understand whether or not you had approved the liquor license for it to be back on the agenda because we've had it on there about three times. And it should only be on here if you have said everything is checked out and the board is ready to approve it. But you know, it continues to come back on here.
So are you referring to the Dollar General?
Dollar, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, the last meeting that I was at, you guys tabled it. And I think there was a meeting that I wasn't, I didn't know about, um, that you were discussing, uh, what needs to be done. So, um, at this point, um, I did get an email from our attorney. Um, I guess there was a conversation between, um, our attorney and one of the aldermen. So, um, I think I'm waiting for the board since it has to be approved by the board on what you would like to have done. Because at this point, that's why it was tabled because there was several questions and it was reviewed by the attorney and was shared, but, uh, was shared. The attorney shared everything with, uh, all the aldermen. So what direction would you like me to go with this?
Okay. So it's not what the alder, what the attorney shares with us. It's you telling us that they have met all the requirements. And once you say that they met all, all the requirements, it goes on the agenda and then we approve it. So there is no one else other than you that could tell us that they met everything. So.
I, I understand what you're saying, but when you say you're tabling it, there was a discussion saying that, um, that there has to be, I could say, go ahead and go forward with it. But there was discussion that it had to be approved by the board and that's where it was left at.
Yeah, but the approval of the board comes after it's been confirmed that they met all the requirements. So at this point, do you know if they've met all the requirements?
Um, as far as I know, um, there was a question about, um, the person who represents Dollar General not living in, um, in the area. And, um, I don't know, again, I have all the documentation. For me, it, based on the ordinance, it should be approved. There were some other little caveats that the, uh, the, um, attorney has shared with you guys. So if, if you want it approved, then it will be approved. But there were some concerns and that's why it was tabled and that's why it's being held up.
Okay. So we, yeah, we don't approve it without you telling us that it's met everything. So that's why I was trying to ask. Have they met everything based on our ordinance for us to approve? We don't approve it until you tell us that they've met everything. It shouldn't even be on the agenda until we know that all of those processes are complete. So if there's things that are still, uh, questionable for us not to approve it, then we wouldn't. We, it's not a, what the board want to do. We only do it out of compliance with the guidance that you provide us. So that's why I had emailed to find out why I was being put back on the agenda. Cause I know the very first time you was like, I didn't, you didn't know why it was on there. Um, so that's.
And that was correct. I wasn't, I didn't even know anything about it at the time. So, uh, that was correct at that point in time.
Okay. So right now is.
Thank you.
Saying it's ready to approve.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All woman read.
Sorry. Um, yeah. Uh, hey Kathy, um, you know, I had mentioned this before about the liquor licenses that they're all need to be reviewed. You know, approved again by before the end of the year. So just wanted to make sure, you know, remind you of that. Because in that process, um, you know, before the collector would list out all of the lit, uh, all of the licenses that need to be renewed with, you know, kind of like a checklist somewhat of everything per ordinance that they have met. You know, and it gets presented to us before the, the end of the year. So we can renew those licenses. Cause it comes as a recommendation for, from you, you know, say for instance, there's eight of them. Then you may say, okay, these six I recommend for approval, but two, I don't and because of these reasons. So that's just kind of, you know, the process. It's a recommendation from you if we should move forward with the liquor licenses or not. So that's going to be the same thing for, you know, the existing ones that we have now before the end of the year.
So let me see if I'm clear on that. So you, before the end of the year, you want me to review the liquor license that we have in place and review them for reasonableness or wha, whatever else that needs to be, uh, reviewed? If there is a question, um, to bring it up with the board before the end of the year so that, and, and to let you know what the statuses of all of these liquor licenses are. Is that correct?
Um, no, I mean, it's just, it's just your recommendation. Like I think there, if I'm not mistaken, I think there's nine current licenses.
There's nine.
Yeah. So they all expire December thirty-first.
Okay.
So they all supposed to, I'm assuming there is some communication that you send to all those guys saying you need to have your application in by this date with all of the required items that they need. So you can present the renewals to us before the end of the year. So that those people don't have a gap in their liquor licenses. So they don't have to, you know, stop selling liquor. But.
I got it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's it. So, um, and then did you ever, uh, hear any, get any more information on the green acre issue that's on our, um, P and L now? You were going to sit and talk with Lori, but I know they had payroll thing. They had a lost, you know, data was lost from a couple of months and then auditors are in. So I'm not sure if you had a chance to talk with her and understand.
If you're referencing, I think it was at that meeting when, um, the mayor ended the meeting and, um, we had the information, uh, back then because the next day, uh, Lori got the monies that, um, were, um, that there were in question. And she got them from, um, the contact. And so that was deposited, uh, back in August.
The green, she got money for Green Acres?
Or are you talking, are you talking about, yeah, you're talking about green acres, right? And that's.
Yeah.
Because you were concerned about they owed us revenue and, uh, Lori looked into it and we received monies from them. She gave me the documentation. I don't have it on me. That's what, with your reference.
Okay. Well, if you could forward that to the board, then we'll all have it. I never saw that. I've, I've never, yeah, I never got a response back on that whole green acre where we have the expense and the revenue sitting on the P and L. And no one understood that. But you said you were going to go back to her. Okay. I don't remember getting that. So if you could please just, you know, reforward it to us. That'd be great. Thank you so much.
All woman Thomas?
Yes, sir. Uh, hey Kathy, Ms. Musa. I was, uh, one of the questions that I asked the, uh, manager that was at our meeting on, I believe, two weeks ago, when he was there to present on the liquor license, was that he contacted you because of the, uh, many questions that we had. And if, uh, and if you, and I mean, if you've got all those answers and your recommendation is that they do obtain the liquor license, then that's what, uh, then that's what I would go by. But I did ask him to call you.
I, I didn't have a conversation with whoever you're talking about. Um, I don't know who we spoke with, but it was not me.
Right. But you can check with, uh, city clerk to get his name. And I believe she probably has his phone number. If you could just follow up with him because he was unsure of even having a conversation with you concerning the liquor license.
What person are you referring to?
Uh, the gentleman, uh, from Family Dollar that was on our zone.
Chris Basler.
Okay.
I believe that's who it is.
Yes, Basler, that's me.
Oh, he's on there tonight. Well, Chris, could you call, uh, our, our collector and just have a, a talk to talk with her concerning your license? So that everything that might be confusing can get straightened out.
Well, I, I had, I actually spoke to our attorney who spoke to your attorney who spoke to her. Like I said, the last meeting, there are some things that are above my pay grade.
Right, right.
I haven't spoke to anyone. So can, uh, Chris, who did your attorney speak with? Because no one says.
The city attorney. She's, she sent me a note that the city attorney and her spoke.
Um, okay.
Uh, excuse me, may I speak?
Yes, you're welcome.
This is Dorothy White Coleman. I am the city attorney and I have not spoken to any. This is Dorothy White Coleman. I am the city attorney, and I have not spoken to anyone. I exchanged an email with Ms. Williams, who asked about the next meeting, and that was the extent of it.
I'm trying to screen through my emails here, but. It says the local license was approved on June 24th, signed by the city collector, mayor, and city clerk. However, post issuance, we were advised on June 25th. I've been told that they're putting the license on hold until the city attorney looks into it a little deeper. With that, based on the city code and correspondence, the city attorney, Dorothy White Coleman, only the board can approve the application for a license to sell liquor. And it seems that the issue is, had been issued out of sequence. We will be attending the next board meeting at her request.
You said who signed off?
I have, sorry, let me get back to it. Give me a sec, one second. Putting the, the city attorney, Dorothy White Coleman, only, oh. I'm out of order here. On June 24th, signed by the city collector, mayor, and the city clerk.
Okay.
It was approved.
Okay, thank you. Once again, thank you.
Now, can I say something? That was, I wasn't there to, Chris, whoever came in to get that. I was informed by Lori that we were waiting for everything before it was issued to you. So I did not hand over that license to anyone, so. Who had, who gave you the license? Because it was on hold for that very reason before we issued it. So you don't have the actual, you don't have the actual license.
No, no, we don't have the license. It said the local license was approved and signed on June 24th by the collector, the mayor, and the clerk. However, it's been put on hold until the Board of Aldermen votes.
Okay.
All right.
All right, Mayor, my hand is up, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just have a question. Good evening, Mr. Basler, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, last time you were before, it was one remark that you made. I just wanted to make sure we understood. You said that normally when we were asking what criteria Family Dollar uses before they decide what locations are going to use, the use to sell alcohol. Were you aware that the chemical that's within 300 feet from you sells alcohol, beer, wine, liquor, and everything?
Beer and wine, I knew about, yes, but again, as I said in the last meeting, some of these decisions are above my pay grade. I just go with what our marketing team and our leadership team tells us. So based on the volume of our store, which if you remember was what I said is our number one driver, the volume of the store, and then the proximity to a liquor store, which sells full book, which I said at the point was, I believed about 500 yards was where we, if there's, if there's a total liquor store, then no. But I am aware that Ruler sells beer and wine, yes.
No, I said Conco, a chemical gas station, the Conco gas station.
Well, yeah, realistically, it's not a liquor store. I mean, they sell 50 mils and pint bottles. So they have a very small selection.
Okay, now they have a rare.
And I can't tell you, you asked me, you know, what the volume was going to be in our selection. I just got my delivery for our store at the Clock Tower Plaza, again, another high-volume store without a liquor store within 500 yards. And we got 16 cases of wine. That's, it's a four-foot set that we'll be putting in.
Okay. Thank, all women read.
Thanks, Mayor. One last clarifying question from the city collector, based on what Mr. Basler said. So the city collector, did you sign the license for the liquor before you review the documents that they had? Or did you not sign this at all? Or, and then you found out we supposed to approve it? How was there a license signed before it been approved by the board? I guess that's my question.
I can't really answer that right now. I have to think about it, because that's been a while back. And when it was brought up to me in August, it was something that I thought had already been done. So I would have to, and go back and review exactly what went on, because it really wasn't a whole lot of information at the time. And I, that's all I can say. That's all I can say at this point.
I mean, because we don't get a lot of liquor licenses for in Belfast neighbors. This is literally like the second one in the three years I've been here. So I'm just saying, did you sign the license first and then hold it? Or do you not remember, because since you've been here, it's only been this one, and that gateway one?
I really don't remember at that point. I know I signed it at the time, but it wasn't being issued because of the information as far as when I spoke to Lori, because I guess the person, Chris, or whoever it was that represented Dollar General, had talked to Lori. So Lori had submitted the paperwork to Dorothy, the attorney, to review. So she told me she was holding on to it, so nothing was going to be done until it was reviewed. That's, that's the long and short of it, of my information at that point in time up into August when this came up.
Thanks.
All women, tap, and your hand's still up, that you have. You're muted.
I'm sorry, I just noticed I left it up. I'm taking it down.
You're done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then. All right, thank you for your report. Planning and zoning.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Planning and zoning had an in-person meeting this past Monday, October 12th. That was at City Hall. The minutes of the open and close session of our meeting on September 14th, they were approved without modification and have been forwarded to the city clerk. We did ratify the closed session vote that was taken on September 14th. We had expected an applicant for a change of use at 9266 Lewis and Clark to be present at the meeting, but they did not attend. One of the items we discussed was location for basketball hoops. This is as a consequence of the recently passed nuisance ordinance. Case law was forwarded by the city attorney and forwarded to members. After discussion of possible mandated locations for basketball hoops and the root problem, which appears to be noise generated while playing basketball after dark, especially after dark, it was the consensus of planning and zoning that the remedy for that noise would be added to or enforced as part of existing Article Five offenses against public peace, either in Section 19-76 or 19-91. Possible wording additions could be, and this would be restrictions, playing basketball near a residence or yard whose occupants are not involved in the play or playing after dusk. So that's what our recommendations are for basketball hoops, that that would go into Section 19 of the city code. We also reviewed the first draft of a food truck ordinance provided by Alderman Christian. Where to allow their use was among the topics discussed. We will review this again after members have a chance to review the document further. In the last item we reviewed was possible changes to Section 29-91 signs in residential districts as to how the existing code could impact freedom of speech. Specifically, changes to 29-916A, limiting the time signs are displayed on residential property. And Section 29916E, limiting signs pertaining to the same candidate or issue to one per lot were discussed, including comments on both topics by the city attorney. After a lot of discussion, it was felt the existing code was practical in its present form and did not need alteration. We felt that the word arguably, which was used by the city attorney's discussion of both sections, could be taken at face value, and the commission chose not to recommend changes to those sections of the code. We do remain open to review other sections of the code regulating signs and their effect on freedom of speech as they are discovered. And that's the end of my report.
Mayor, can I interject?
Yes.
When you talked about peace disturbance regarding the basketball play, I would be very careful on using peace disturbance within that. A police officer's peace cannot be disturbed. It requires a complaint for us to legally act upon. It doesn't mean that we can't have conversations with people. But if we end up having to, let's say, charge a reoffender who just won't quit, it requires a complaint of the public, a formal complaint, and most people don't want to come forward in that manner. But I still want to be able to enforce it legally without it having to be a peace disturbance style ordinance.
All righty, thank you. Bill and Inspector's report.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
All right.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I raised my hand late. This is to Chairman Barrett. I've heard of, you know, people trying to do Airbnbs, if I'm saying that right. I know we don't have any ordinance around that. That's something really new to, you know, everybody. So I didn't know if possibly you guys want to look into that, possibly having some type of regulation on that, you know? Kind of new, like the food truck thing. You know, I don't know, but maybe we should look into that.
We can take a look.
You know what I'm talking about, right? The Airbnbs, when people kind of rent it.
Basically running out homes for, as if they were hotels.
Right, okay, thank you, because I only learned it like a couple years ago.
Okay, will I respond to that?
Sorry, no, it was just something for Mr. Barrett, the team, P and D to look into. Because there are some, like in Ward Four, I know of already.
Bill and Inspector.
Good evening, everyone. I have a pretty short inspection report for this evening. We did have several residential block inspections and complaints we've investigated this month for September here. Inspections for occupancy have slowed down a little bit. We're down to about 28, 27 new inspections and re-inspections respectively. Building construction, we've had a few of those. We've got several deck and addition projects going on. As far as major projects, Gateway Market is one of the bigger ones. I think it was Ms. Mabry or someone that asked earlier about, some questions about that. They will have a full kitchen in it. We was there today looking at the new hood to be installed. They have a brand-new industrial kitchen hood to be installed. They're planning on having a full kitchen available and a full market available as well, from my understanding. Another item that's happened is just about finished is the street work around town. Everyone's realized all summer long that the north half and the south half of Belfast have been under pretty major construction, the street work and the water lines. All that has been repaired, the repair work and ceiling, the final grading and seed and straw has happened everywhere except for down on Donnell. They have yet to put down the new asphalt paving. They have the concrete curves and concrete street in. They have yet to put the asphalt down. Other than that, that's about the extent of my report.
All right, yeah, Allam and Carol.
I have a couple of questions. When you say block inspections, can you like specify what that actually is?
Any, any code or infractions or property maintenance around the city?
So you go, so you inspect city, so you inspected 208 blocks or 208 residents?
There were 208 infractions that were cited.
There were 208 infractions for property maintenance code violations in September of 2020. There were 2008 citations issued?
208 inspections, or 208 issues that were cited, yes.
Okay, and then, how long does it take to complete a residential inspection for occupancy?
That always depends on the condition of the home, anywhere from half an hour to an hour.
And then, when you, down here, we're under the block inspections where it says complaints investigated, it says 17, what is that complaints received by, what, where, what is that from?
Those are complaints that have been called into the building department office, so specific complaints from residents that have had specific items that wanted to be addressed.
And then with, the, it says court zero, grass notice six, and waiver five. Can you specify what that is?
Yeah, it's getting kind of late in the season. The grass notices are going way down, obviously. Those few stragglers that have not continued to mow their grass or vacant houses have not continued to be mowed that were still cited.
So those are citations that were issued, six citations for grass were, okay, and then the waiver, I'm sorry?
Waivers are items that were completed at the final of the building inspection. They were given additional time to finalize an item, and we will waiver those items out, give them additional time to finish something.
Okay, and then my final question down at the bottom where you say repeat rentals on the certificates of occupancy issued. What's a repeat rental?
I should be able to explain that better. Judy has explained that too.
Yeah, if you can just email me, that's fine, that's fine. Just send me an email.
The rentals, the rentals are houses that we know that are being managed and re-rented over and over again. If it's, if it's a repeat rental, it comes up as a repeat rental. And if it's a rental that hasn't been rented before, it comes up as a new rental, I believe is how that works. I would have to ask Judy that to be.
Okay, if you could, I'd appreciate it, and send me an email. Thank you.
I can do that. I can do that.
All women, Elliot.
Yes, I was just trying to, wanted to ask him, Joe, if he was aware of what this K and P precast was. I did ask before the meeting, and I didn't get a response. Were you involved in that?
K and P precast?
Yes, it says, "Precast concrete sanitary structures include developed bases with inverts and flexible rubber gaskets." You know anything about that?
I don't.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thank you.
All women read.
Thanks, Mayor. Joe, yeah, I just had a couple of questions on the block inspections. Because I'm just seeing a lot of new things, you know, with new renters or new homeowners in the neighborhood that are doing things that are different, like boats on the grass. that are doing things that are different, like boats on the grass. Um, you know, cars covered up on the street or um, you know, on jacks or whatnot. So with the block inspections, I heard you told the other outer man that um, that's the number of citations. So I know it's only one and a half of you guys, including everything else you have to do. But um, how long does it take for you to block inspect the entire city? Like, is it a six-month turnaround? Does it take a whole year to inspect all the blocks of Bellphone neighbors? You know, it's always stuff going on.
Right. Um, well, again, it's it's hard to be on top of everything as it happens. But um, it does not take that long to turn around going over the city. I mean, I, I drive the city three times a month at least, the entire city. Um, and I'm in, of course, there's much area, there are some areas that are uh much more traveled than others. Just because of travel. Um, anytime I'm traveling around and I see infractions, I do write them down and we follow up on them. Um, it's not always a hundred percent quick turnaround on having things uh remedied, but we do go through the town several times a month.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Joe, uh, city engineer.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Uh, you've got uh the report in front of you for the month of September. There were basically thirty uh occupancy permits that were uh issued. And then for this coming month, there'll be uh thirty-six uh building inspections for Joe to do. And you can see the other uh permits that were issued for this month. So uh it is starting to pick up a little bit, but uh it's maintaining. Couple of other things is I checked in on uh the MSD project on Coburg Drive. And they are right now about four hundred and fifty feet of uh pipe has been laid. They're still, they're doing, the whole project is about a mile. So that's uh uh about five thousand feet that they have to do. So um, they're on schedule. Uh, and they're continuing with that. Uh, I'm working with uh Amy in the rep department to uh, and I've almost got it completed a spec for replacing the existing roof over the gymnasium, the flat part, it's leaking. Um, and uh, I should have to, uh, Mayor Pearson, uh, either tomorrow or Monday. Uh, uh, two names and they'll be coming up to uh fill uh vacancies that we have on the board of adjustment. Um, and I'm looking here. There was one last thing that I wanted to uh state and now I've lost it here. Excuse me. Oh, uh, I don't know if any of you, I know it's uh not necessarily a heavily traveled uh uh drive. Uh, but uh, on Belgrove Drive about two weeks ago, uh USGS came in and they attached to the bridge going over um Watkins Creek, uh, a gauge for MSD uh that measures the stormwater. It was previously further up, I believe, was it down, uh, on Watkins Creek, but uh it had gotten washed out, so they're gonna put it there. Uh, that is one of two. There's another one that is currently uh just down the street on uh, uh, the bridge that goes uh on Bell Fountain Road that goes over um Mayline Creek right there. So that was basically it that I have right now.
Alwoman Elliot.
Um, uh, Engineer Klein, could you please clarify for our residents? Um, what grant has been applied for? Is, who, who applied for the CD, CDBC grant or whatever?
Which, which grant? I, I.
Who was, who was assigned that you aware of to uh complete that application?
I'm not aware of anyone right now.
But prior to that, who was you aware of? That supposedly had applied for it based on the emails that we received? So we got a e- email with both of us on there from Rodney Robertson.
Well, that'd be the one, but I didn't know uh if anything had been done on that because there was nothing. In order to get those, you have to have uh the plans and then you have to have uh and how you got the plans, you have to make sure that if you had uh design consultants that uh you got, you know, you went and got three different quotes and bids and looked that over. But then you have to have some type of drawing or something shown with an estimated budget. And then, then you turn in, that's for the CDBG, the block grants.
Right.
But uh, that's, I, I, I'm not aware of any of that been turned in though.
Okay, cause I remember when um I asked you and you were unaware that he was even being involved. And since that time, we had not had an update and we clarified that the board did not approve him to do it. And in the past, um, someone may have mentioned that the city clerk normally filled out the application. I'm not sure. We just was not aware of how his involvement got, you know, took place. But um, you know, since the resident had wanted to um investigate someone, I guess you'll be investigating the mayor. Okay, thank you.
Um, Alwoman Chapman.
Yes, I think the grant that was brought up in question was the Rex and Parks Grant. There was a question asked about if we had gotten that grant and we actually disent, we lost the grant. I think that was the grant. Um, the citizen was referencing was the twenty-twenty grant for parks and recs. That's the one that was submitted where we disent receiving four hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars because there was a resolution that wasn't attached and found. And so we did lose that grant. I'm looking at it now. I had to find this one. Um, so there's two different grants. The CBD grant is different than the Harton Recs grant that a Tina Lerman submitted on behalf of the city, but we were pushed out of the first round of um notification because there was a resolution that was not found. I have it here. So that's the two different grants. That's the grant she's stating. And I would like to know too, um, because that's four hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. Um, that we lost. We talked about following up procedures and a small procedure of, as that, a, a grant writer for thirty years would know that grant writing one-on-one, if you don't have your doc page done, which is the signature of the CEO of the company, city, hospital, whoever you write in the grant form, they, you don't even make it to the next level. And something that's simple is not having a signature on a resolution. We lost four hundred ten thousand.
Under me. Uh, how about, you didn't? You got my hand raised.
Um, Alwoman Reed.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, I didn't, I couldn't, I can't hardly hear Alderwoman Chapman, but were we, I thought we were talking about the CB, um, the community development grant. That was only, I think it's like twenty-nine, it's under thirty thousand, I believe. Um, that, that's the one I thought Alderwoman Avon Elliott was talking about.
Mm-hmm.
I just answered her reference to the previous remark that was made concerning a citizen investigating.
Oh, you were adding something else. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I was confused.
Because that's the part that, you know, because it was stated in a previous meeting that the grant we lost was not um, it was applicable to the mayor. It was attributed to the mayor in an earlier meeting that that grant is the grant that the mayor had authority. And I was just clarifying that the four hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars was not.
Okay.
Since it was brought up again.
Okay, no, I, I was, I thought you were talking, I was like this, that other grant was only, it's only twenty-nine something. It's not thirty thousand.
Right.
That's what I was talking about. Okay. So with that one, did we, did we lose that? Is that what we're saying? Um, because we didn't have plans or something? Because I thought that was due back in, I don't know, September or something?
I don't know, a long time ago.
Yeah, that one was due a while ago to CBD, the, the community development block grant or something like that. Mm-hmm. So did that get filed? Cause we had a, a hearing and everything for that. I guess that's maybe a mayor question, I'm not sure, or the engineer question, but as far as I know, Engineer Klein wasn't even a part of that. So did we, did we file for that community development block grant, Mayor? Or you?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so we had plans and all of that for the pool, cause that was supposed to pay for the pool. Cause I know my question was, do we think our pool is gonna be ready for hopefully next year, if, you know, Corona is better? Um, is that on the ball, the pool?
That's the grant that she's referring to, the, the uh a park and rec grant.
No, so we had.
We're not talking about the community.
No, 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 no. Yeah, we had voted on the community development block grant, that twenty-nine something to be used for the pool.
For the recs.
Yeah, that was in the rec center because we already knew we had all that problem with that outside pool. So we voted to use those funds instead of giving it to like residents or whatever. We all voted to use that twenty-nine thousand towards the pool. So I'm wondering, did we get that filed? You said yes. So how is the pool going? Like, have we, have we started working on the pool? With that twenty-nine?
I know, the pool, uh, I think Amy's on, uh, but the pool, we had gotten a bid on that, Amy, for a hundred and fifty some odd thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know it's gonna be more, you know?
And then we needed a roof on the gym, which was a hundred and some thousand dollars as well. Uh, so that twenty-nine thousand dollars, we ain't talking about that. Not the work that need to be done.
There is a, a, a amount um in the budget for like twenty-nine thousand dollars. But that lumps in, in the uh roof for the gymnasium. The update for the um, uh, software that we have to have for the department and the pool. So it's going to end up oh, probably, uh, the roof is probably gonna be eighty thousand. The uh, uh, software update is probably gonna be ten thousand. So it's probably going to be like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the pool.
And we had, I can't remember right now, so I'm not looking at the budget, but we had so much money set aside in the capital budget for the pool and the roof. I don't remember the software, but I, you know, it's been a minute. But I know there was funds already there, but we had decided to use to offset some of that expenditure with that twenty-nine thousand community development block grant. So that's, that's what I was wondering if we, so we're not to that phase yet, Amy, with working on the pool. We haven't gotten bids that we've approved or, cause I haven't seen them, but that's what I was wondering, if we're to the point of getting bids or whatnot on the pool, but we're not.
Let's, okay, let's get back on track because we're, we're wasting a lot of time here now. And uh, the uh city engineer has uh concluded his report. Uh, chief of police. Chief, your report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll uh try not to waste too much time. Um, I'm gonna open up with um some policing activity. Um, I had us talk with my staff and we've kind of organized uh, a system where we are making more motors contacts. I've um, I've gotten a lot of feedback, but if you have been aware um, the last few weeks and continuing on from here, the police are gonna be making quite a few stops. Um, because of the speeding issues, stop sign issues and all the traffic complaints that we do get. Um, it's an educational process, uh, it's a tur- current process. And it's still uh aligned with what I believe in policing is, is that um a traffic stop is graded on the merits of that stop only. So with the results of that stop are dependent upon what happens on that stop. Uh, the second thing on my list is, and I brought this up a long time ago and I've, I've let it sit. Uh, because the, the board's been uh busy doing a few other things. Um, we do have a blown engine in one of our Ford Tauruses. Uh, apparently it threw, it threw a rod. It was nothing, it was not operational error or a, a, a maintenance issue. Um, it was just uh one of those things, uh, the engine blew up. Um, so in my mind, we really have three things that we can do. Um, we can sit on it for now and do nothing. Um, we can replace it with a used engine, which um just some phone calls, it's about forty-five hundred bucks. Uh, or we could replace it with a new engine at the ten, about eight thousand dollars. Um, something to think about is if we're going to prolong the fleet uh in consideration of, you know, the financial state of the city in the coming years because of COVID and income. Um, I'm gonna gather some information and present in, and, and hopefully in the next board meeting. And I'm going to elect to probably recommend the replacement with a brand new engine. Uh, if we are going to keep our cars longer, a used engine uh may come with problems of its own. And a sitting car um puts more stress on the rest of the fleet. So it's just something to think about for right now. As it concerns the CARES Act, uh, phase one and uh sub-phase one have been completed. Um, the ordinance and uh resolution that were approved by the city uh was submitted on sub-phase one. Uh, so as of right now, we are current with our obligations with the municipal relief program. Uh, phase two, uh, I attended a webinar. It's due November thirteenth. And the latest information I have, because they haven't opened up phase two yet. Um, but phase two involves a lot of expense documentation. Medical, public health payroll, compliance measures, uh, and other COVID expenses are the major categories. And this is the phase where we are line IDing things. Phase one was just giving summaries of those major categories. Uh, phase two is basically showing invoices uh identifying by employee, uh, because public safety payroll is, is back into um, this relief program. Um, so there's gonna be a, a lot of backend work that goes into phase two. Uh, but it's not gonna open up until um, the funding agreement is issued based on email I received um, at about twelve-thirty today. Um, and I haven't received the funding uh agreement. Uh, but when I do, it will be given to the mayor according to the resolution, the ordinance. Um, the mayor already has permission to sign the funding agreement. And we will return to county and move forward with phase two. Um, I came across a two thousand dollar um surveillance camera grant for the city hall side of the government building. Uh, I had replaced the cameras back in the beginning of July twenty-nineteen on a grant. Um, which ended up costing, I think, the city fifteen hundred dollars total. Um, because the grant money covered seventy-five percent of uh the total cost. Uh, the recommendation at that time, to the board at that time, was to replace uh, the cameras existing and add a few more on the city hall end. uh, the cameras existing and add a few more on the city hall end, interior and exterior. I know there was some discussion about it, about moving forward with that, uh, but it hit a roadblock and hadn't been discussed since. I'm gonna go ahead and, um, get three bids for camera replacements, and I will resubmit that to the board for consideration. The grant's two thousand dollars, it covers seventy-five percent, up to two thousand dollars, so if we spend, uh, around twenty-seven fifty, that would use the full two thousand dollars. Uh, see, um, the state grant that we applied for earlier this year, uh, you may or may not remember, it was for the, uh, electronic fingerprinting system. Uh, our old one, uh, was expiring because of Windows Seven. We needed a Windows Ten machine, uh, to capture electronic fingerprints, that has finally been installed as of yesterday. Uh, the company responsible for, uh, installing and doing the training, uh, wasn't, wasn't available to do it because of COVID. That piece of equipment runs about, I believe it's like twenty thousand dollars, and didn't cost us a penny because of the, uh, grant with the state. The Public Safety and Crime Prevention Summit was two Saturdays ago, I just wanted to mention. I thought, uh, it was great, it was a good turnout, a lot of good information. I did a three-part presentation, back to basics, use of force, and body worn cameras. The last two were largely based on our policies and practices, and if you want to see that presentation, go to the department's Facebook page, because they did Facebook Live, it's, it's archived there if you're interested in watching it. See. The Murma Police Seminar is coming up November tenth. Uh, as, as discussed before, Murma has three mandatory conferences per year. Uh, this is one of the three, instead of, uh, two days, they cut it down to one day. It is, it, the, like, the Ozarks. I will be going down the evening before, we also have a police committee meeting, because I'm on the police committee for the insurance company, and I'm just asking the board for, uh, it's already funded in my budget, I'm just out of tradition, uh, asking the board permission to leave the area to attend that training.
All right. All women, Jack.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
You got your hand up. Somebody need to mute. Okay, go right here now. You, you got your hand up. Okay, you got it down there. All women, uh, Dales. Unmute just a minute.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. I have a question for the chief. Um, I was wondering, um, years back, there used to be, um, roadblocks, where the policeman would, maybe like at the corner of Chambers and Bell Fountain, um, I guess you would colla-, um, join other forces, and they would, you know, stop people coming and going. Is there a reason why that isn't being done now?
We only do roadblocks for certain and very specific reasons, usually, uh, they're, they're crime-related, if we're trying to gather information or locate somebody. If you're, we also did, um, uh, stationary activities when it came to seatbelt grants, uh, provided by the state. It, it depends on what you're talking about, there's a, there's a few different purposes. And I wouldn't call it a roadblock, it's.
I, I just remember that they used to, um, they used to do it all the time, um, here in Bell Fountain, that they would, I think they were at Chambers and Bell Fountain, but it's been years ago, and, um.
You're talking like a DWI checkpoint?
I'm sorry?
Like a DWI checkpoint, something like that?
Yeah, yeah, and at that time, um, I think they did it maybe once every ninety days or so. I know that deterred a lot of individuals from coming through the city, and it did cut down on a lot of crime, and I was just wondering, is there something that we can probably maybe do in the future?
Yes, I'd have to check, what, usually what we did was, we would use, uh, state-funded grants, uh, to do those tasks, that way, it wouldn't cost the city any money, it covered payroll, and a bunch of other stuff and equipment and things like that to, to, uh, do an event like that. Um, that's the way I prefer to do it, because it, it, it doesn't, the, the cost isn't laid upon the city, because if the city paid for it, it'd be pretty expensive. Um, but I could look at some grants and see what's available out there.
And another question is, would you also join with St. Louis County and Moline Acres? Um, because I noticed that when they did do the roadblocks, that they would have, um, individual, other, the police departments at the other end, so when individuals turned around. So would that also cover the other police departments as well, if they joined in with you?
That, you know what, that I'm not familiar with, we've never done a joint, like, we've never done a joint DWI checkpoint.
Okay.
Uh, that's not the way they've been traditionally set up, but I had, it's been a while since I've looked at those grants. I can see if there is a, what I would call a combined grant, where you have multiple jurisdictions involved in one event. I mean, that's a possibility, but I'd have to check.
Okay.
And that, we, we, we're getting close to closing time.
Okay, thank you. I'll call you with the other.
Okay. All women, Elliot?
Um, I would like to make a motion to release Chief to attend the Murma Conference.
My second, Mayor.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, ayes have it.
Okay, Mayor, um, I need to, uh, request a.
I have one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
It's okay. I did conduct an inventory of this, of the, uh, the, the city employees', um, mask in, uh, surplus. Uh, as of right now, we have about seventeen hundred masks available, we also give them out to the public when they come in as well. I've got a donation coming in from, uh, Behavioral Health Response, which is a hundred and fifty masks. I think we have about two more supply pickups coming from the Office of Emergency Management for the police department, and they're ending the, uh, emergency management, uh, uh, inventory program at the end of this year, it'll be no longer available. I've also reached out to, uh, a couple people, uh, looking for donations of, for masks. So, keep in mind, I'd like the board just to think, no action needs to be taken right now, but, you know, over the next six to nine months, uh, free inventory is only gonna last us for so long. So we may, may, may have to make a purchase, and that purchase should be timely, because if people start running out of their own inventory, it's gonna be like, kind of like what it was before, it's gonna be hard to get masks, because everyone's trying to buy them at one time. That's all I have, and that concludes my report.
All one, Elliot? Oh, well, that was you, you're done, right?
No.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, can I interject at this point? Over five hundreds that we did not approve, that came in at the last minute, um, for, for the, um, credit cards, we need to approve that.
Is that a motion?
I would like to make a motion to, um, add the additional over five hundreds under, um, unfinished business, so then it won't be out of order.
Second. Uh, all men, Carol?
My second.
Uh, in front of discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? Ayes have it. Is that, that, uh, um, all men, Carol, is that your hand up?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple questions for Chief. Um, regarding the Police Department Strategic Planning, uh, Plan, when, when are you gonna provide a, a, a valuation on that? A, as to the progress or lack?
Assessment? I can't, honestly, I cannot give you a timeline. And I, I'm, I'm being straight with you, I've been, um, personally so busy with my job. It's not a backburner thing, I believe in that plan, and I try to follow that plan. I am trying to find the time to write up the assessment portion, because I would like to make that available to the public. Uh, but as of right now, I cannot give you a deadline on that.
All right, and then the second thing, during the, uh, Safety Summit, you, uh, mentioned that you, uh, you keep track of, uh, use of force, and, and you make a, a report of, 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 of the use of force, is that, uh, report, um, available to the board?
It can be made available.
Okay.
You're talking about that, you're, you're talking about the annual, the annual use of force report.
Right.
Yes.
When do you do that?
The, the report is actually a living document throughout the year, and it closes out at the end of the calendar year.
All right. So we can get a copy of that at the end of the calendar year then?
Oh, sure, we can, we, actually, we can put it on the city's website, to make it even easier.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Finding a case precedent that addresses the ambiguities in the Sunshine Law is hard to come by. A recent case, however, out of the Western District of Missouri, Gross versus Parsons et al., could be very helpful in that regard. One of the issues, one of the burning issues that is, that the case addresses, uh, has to do with the fees that may be assessed for search, research, and duplication time. Uh, in the case, the state argued that they were required to use an attorney to perform research on a ti-, on attorney-client privilege matters, as well as those matters that constitute legal work product. The court approved charging for attorney's fees, as long as the charge was at the rate lowest paid by an attorney in the office, so this is a first. The second question, uh, had to do with what fees could be charged for the production of electronic records. There, the court did not allow attorney's fees to be charged, because the statute only indicates that the fees to be charged include those for the cost of copies, staff time, and they were not to exceed the hourly rate for staff. Some other questions addressed in the opinion have to do with the period of time that is reasonable to comply with requests, redactions, and purpose, purposeful violations. The case, however, is not final. The plaintiff has filed for an application with the Supreme Court, and if the Supreme Court grants that application, it will then be reviewed by the Supreme Court. So we'll have to wait to see whether it holds up. Uh, but it could be very useful, because it addresses a number of issues, uh, that have, um, been pondered by attorneys for a long time. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business? Wardful barriers, have we, did we discuss that enough tonight? All women, Dales?
We have, Mayor, um, because it's going through the, um, Street Department, and, um, that's basically it, that's what I was gonna state, then I talked with Mark and Jeff, and they're gonna be, um, working to get that, get done for the citizens and workforce.
All right, thank you. Family Dollar, do we need to discuss that any further? All right, let's move on to new business resolutions, uh, uh, all, all.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Uh, I think a motion was made to pay that, uh, US Bank bill under unfinished business.
Uh, all, all women, uh, um, Elliot, then you, is that what you did?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, so let's, uh.
It's not in the chat, and, uh, if we can, if I can just get the figure, because I wasn't able to, uh, pull it down, because we had started the meeting when I got the email.
It's, it's up to you if you're ready for me to make the motion, I was.
Yeah, I thought, because we was going into, uh, I thought this would be a good time to do it.
Um, if it, if it will be helpful, let me see if I can, um.
Was it email to us?
Yeah, she sent it late.
She sent it late, but did we vote to put it up on the unfinished business, can we go ahead and address it now?
Okay, so, um, just. Okay, so the chief, the chief bill has, uh, flash drives, evidence printer ribbon, investigative supplies, office supplies, t-shirt, Crime Prevention Summit, tote bags from Crime Prevention Summit, police car parts, five USB and terror station, and then the mayor's, um, has, um, I think it was like, okay, breakfast meeting at Cracker Barrel, Roberts Rule of Order books, program for treasurer, treasurer and, and mayor ordered program online, um, and QuickBooks online to obtain a receipt, um, subscription of seventy-five dollars. So is that a monthly subscription, I'm assuming, because it was on the last one? And then there was a bill that came in from veneer sales services for, um, one motor at eleven-twenty-five. So the total is five thousand four hundred sixty dollars and sixty-nine cent that we will be paying for checks number forty-three-one-twenty-five and forty-three-one-twenty-six, so if you're ready for me to make the motion, I can go. Okay, I move to approve checks numbers, um, forty-three-one-twenty-five and forty-three-one-twenty-six, for a total of five thousand four hundred sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Um, all, all men, uh, Carol? Been moving in proper second, is there any further discussion? Uh, roll call, do the roll call right quick in this. Let's get this one.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was on mute, I'm sorry. All the women, Dales?
Yes.
Audeman Thomas?
Yes.
Audeman Carol?
Yes.
All the woman, West?
No.
All the woman, Avant Elliott?
Yes.
Who's next? All the woman, Reed? She's not there. All the woman, Chapman?
Yes.
Audeman Christian?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, yes, except two. Audeman Reed didn't answer, and all the woman West said no.
Okay. All right, then let's move to the resolutions.
Mayor, I got a question. We keep putting that Family Dollar store liquor license, this is about the third or fourth time that it's been on the agenda. What are, I, I mean, when are we gonna address this? Why, I mean, you know, the, 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 the manager keeps, and this is at least the second meeting he's come to, and we just gloss over this and don't address it. So I mean, I, I don't know what the plan is for this, or, or, or when are we gonna address it? Or if we are gonna address it, or, or what, it's on the, the, for tonight.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to address that, and we're gonna, uh, settle that, one way or the other. Uh, and so you will have that, uh, at the next board meeting, uh, Mr. Bassler. And, uh, because I'm tired of seeing it on here too. And I know you're tired of being on here. So we're gonna get, we're gonna, we're gonna straighten this out, right now, I can't tell you, but we will get, we will get together. I, I will get together with, uh, with, with the proper people, and we, the next time you see us, uh, we'll have a definitive answer for you.
Well, uh, Mayor, Mayor, thank you, and I just want to say, uh, uh, Avant Elliott, thank you, because last meeting you apologized for me having to sit through the whole thing, but seriously, I, this has been interesting for me, both meetings, so, um, I appreciate the time, and if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And Mayor, I'm sorry, Chief, I do owe you a meeting still. Um, I apologize, my wife surprised me with the last-minute trip to Florida for four days, and, uh, I, uh, I didn't get to come meet you, so I'm, I'm gonna get that on the schedule for next week, if that works for everyone, so, thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. All right, let's do the resolutions right quick. All men, Thomas?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, read resolution twenty twenty, uh, number seven. But I need to amend, for, I need to delete paragraphs four and five. I'm sorry.
Okay, what? Alright, where, uh, are you speaking?
Yeah, no, I had stopped speaking, 'cause I was waiting on the second for the motion, unless I just read the resolution with the,
And read the resolution.
Okay, without the, uh, without paragraph four and five. A resolution establishing the city of Belleview Found Neighbors' support to apply for the STP grant for Shel, Shelby,
Shepley.
Shepley, I'm sorry. Shepley Road, where is the city of Belleview Found Neighbors, Missouri, is an incorporated municipality in the St. Louis County, and Shepley Road is located in the city and is in need of resurfacing. And whereas city of Belleview Found Neighbors, neighbors agrees to move this project forward collaboratively and support it financially upon selection by east, east-west gateway, MODAP, and support the project through completion with a tentative schedule end date of twenty twenty-five. And whereas the city of Belleview Found Neighbors recognizes the members of the current board may not maintain their current status as an elected official throughout the duration of the project, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Alderman for the city of Belleview Found Neighbors as follows. As it be, as be it further resolved that the Board of Alder Persons of the city of Belleview Found Neighbors, that any elected official who was elected after this resolution is past honors the project and the financial obligations through to completion as established.
Is there a second?
Can I have my hand up a second at this?
Yes, you do. All woman dials, you do, yes. Uh, are there any further discussion? I guess, all woman dials, second. Are there any further discussion? Uh, all woman Elliot?
Yes, I was curious to why language will be on their obligating, um, board members who are elected after this resolution, and who will be managing the project since, um, the names are going to, the, the current person is going to be omitted. Who is gonna be submitting the application? That's my inquiry.
Uh, I, I'm gonna get with the, the city engineer, and we will, we'll proceed on this together.
Okay, and then, um, prior to the board meeting, um, last year, there was a presentation by, um, Rodney Robertson and another company.
Yeah, my company.
Yes. Okay, and it was a cost breakdown of what the city obligation would be. I know it was over some thousands. And I asked for that prior to the meeting to review, because if that's gonna be a part of our obligation, then that should be a part of our consideration to approve the resolution, because that's a budget item that we will be agreeing to, so.
This, this resolution, this resolution does not hold you to any dollar amount. This resolution only give me and the, uh, the, uh, engineer, the permission to proceed. Whenever there's some cost, when we run into costs, or anything we run into, we have to bring it to the board for approval. This does not give us the okay to address the whole problem on the street. It's the permission to proceed, that's all.
So, so when the application is rewarded, we won't, so we, we might get it rewarded and then not approve the amount?
No, 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 no. You would, you would approve the amount, you, I, I'm telling you, it would, we would come to you at every step of the way.
Well, that's why I was saying, we did have some information in advance where they had already projected what the expense to the city was, that I was just trying to get another copy of, because it, it is already estimated what that cost for Shepley was gonna be based on.
What I'm saying to you, this does not obligate to you up to any cost. The cost will be brought to you, uh, when it, uh, when it becomes available. It, oh, uh, I guess that's, is that you, Carol?
Yes. Yeah, I got a couple.
Yeah.
Um.
I figured it was you, 'cause, uh, all the woman West is asleep.
No, she's not, I'm, I'm keeping her in check.
Make her stay awake, shake her.
Keeping her in check. They're gonna snap on some people.
Nine twenty.
You know, I'm here with. Anyway, I got, um, because, when, when is the, the, the application for the grant due? When, when?
Uh, that information we will bring to you, uh, this is, uh, uh, I'm gonna start the investigation. That is why we took Rodney Robertson's name off, because we don't know at this point who the engineer is gonna be. It's probably gonna be our own engineer.
Okay.
And so, uh, this is just to, uh, uh, give us permission to start, start proceedings.
And then, you know, I, I, and, and this is just a statement, I think I would concur with, um, all the woman Avon Elliot. Um, I, I have, um, issue with making a future board, um, binding them to a decision that we've made now. I mean, if, if, you know, there's two elections between, there's twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four. I mean, if people decide that they don't want this Shepley project, and they elect someone to like, no, we, we don't want this, but we've already vote, voted to, to bind a future board to this. I, I don't think that's fair, and I, I would prefer to have a resolution that, that, that doesn't hold, um, future, uh, elected officials to, to a decision that we've made now.
This, this does not hold future elected officials, uh, to anything yet, other than you giving me the right to proceed.
It's in the resolution.
With, well, it's in the resolution, mayor.
I understand that, but whatever we do has, when it comes to money and, and, uh, and hiring people, it has to come to the board.
Well, quite frankly, some of those processes are, are circumvented. So coming to the board, I, you know, I mean, there's been board that's non-approved, uh, you know, payment on, on certain things, and it's still paid. So I mean, coming to the board really doesn't hold a lot of water to me when, when the processes aren't followed. When it, you know, a hundred percent of the time. So like I said, I personally would prefer, if, if, you know, just to have a resolution stating, you know, that we're authorizing you and the city engineer to proceed forward with obtaining grant funding or, or whatever. But I, I, I highly object to that language of holding, uh, future boards, uh, to this project.
So mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend, um, the resolution to, um, add back the paragraph, whereas the city supports and authorize the, um, city engineer to make the application for grants on the city behalf and to strike be it further resolved, um, from, from the resolution.
All woman Chapman?
Yes, I was just wanting to enter into the conversation that, um,
Is there a second?
No, we, we were, I, my hand had been up.
Oh, it's only a second after the motion for another.
My hand was up, my hand was before you made that.
Yeah, I was just waiting.
Well, hey.
I didn't want to interrupt, um, but I was stating with the language in here, because the one that I'm reading is the same thing. I think when it's stating, because everybody has their own interpretation, so when I read it, I interpreted as if the, in the middle of this project, that the current board, the new board, would not then vote to stop the project. And that's the way I read it, whereas the city, uh, Bellefontaine recognizing the members of the current board may not maintain their current status as elected officials throughout the duration of the project. And it, it's only given the mayor and our engineer to explore what that is. And I guess, it's just like the street grants we, and the bonds that we have now. We voted, I say, when the board voted, and say, when, when the new board comes in, that project is already ongoing. This protects a new board from saying, well, we don't wanna finish this project. That's the way I interpreted it. I don't know if anyone else interpreted it that way. I think it's a safeguard to say, we're starting on this project. The mayor and the engineer is going to explore what it takes. And if new members of a board come in in the middle of this ongoing project, they want this protected. It won't be, uh, voted down or voted to stop doing it and redirect.
Um, the, uh, the Cobert Lance, uh, project was ongoing when I came on board, when probably all of y'all came on board. So, uh, we have to proceed, we can't keep losing, uh, grants uh, on procedures. Uh, all woman, all woman Reed?
Uh, yeah, mayor, I, 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 um, I understand that the same way as all the women Chapman, that they, you know, this project is not gonna take a year. So obviously, the board members are gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna change, just like the two seventy thing. Um, but my question was, it does have a financial obligation to it, you know, because obviously, if we apply and we get the grant, we are, you, you know, that's, that'll look bad on the city, that then we don't use it. So, but there is a dollar amount to these grants, like it's, it is an amount. So it'd be nice for me, being a numbers person, that I like to know what financial obligation am I putting forth in the future, you know, are they finna be held to, you know, um, like we had four hundred and twenty, I think, for that park grant, are they gonna, and they were held to do twenty percent of that, so it was eighty-four thousand dollars. So how much would we maximum have to pay to get re- awarded these grants? That's the part that I would like in this resolution, and, you know, because it is a finance, the last word says financial obligation through to complete the, uh, you know, the project, so that's, that's only my concern.
Right.
Is that, we don't have a dollar amount.
There's gonna be a financial obligation. Some of those grants, as you say, are, uh, you know, twenty percent, twenty-eighty and so forth, uh, so you're not gonna get that done free. Uh, but we do need to proceed not to lose it, so the city don't fall apart. People complaining about these streets. And Shepley is the only street we have left that will qualify for this grant. And, uh, and, 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 and all the woman West, don't be sitting up, because I'm not the first person.
Yeah, I'm sitting up. But I'm raising up.
A whole lot of other folk live on Shepley other than me. All the one Chapman, come on.
I'm sorry. Uh, I think, um, yeah, and, and, and all the woman Reed, I agree with that. But I, I think this is just authorizing the mayor to explore just to find out what those grants entail, what we actually might qualify them for. So we're like giving him permission to explore, um, these different grants, not to actually enter into anything. Just, okay, we found, we found one that's on here already, so we're all.
This is all the woman West calling for a point of order.
What's your point of order?
The point is, the meeting was supposed to end at nine thirty, and we're beyond that. And so I move that, uh, the meeting be adjourned.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Oh, uh, been moving properly second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Sorry, who's second? Who's second?
I did.
Woman Chapman?
Okay.
Alright, meetings adjourned.
Alright.
Did you say all in favor? I guess you did, I guess.
Yeah, 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 I did.
Can you do a roll call?
Huh?
No.
We've already voted. The meetings adjourned. We'll take it up at the next meeting.
Alright.
Alright.
Bye, everybody.
Everybody.
Can you draft some new resolutions, mayor?
Uh, can I do what now?
You know, you have the new ones ready for us, so we can see it.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And strike that financial part out of there, it'd be great.
Okay.
Discussion, good discussion.
You know, I'll, uh, if it's alright, I'll give you a call, and you can, you can help out. Is that good? All woman Reed, with all your strikes.
I did not strike anything, it was one at the very end. But, uh, I, I think Thomas would do well with updating his own resolution.
Oh, thank you.
What I'm trying to do is make sure that we stop, that we don't lose money that.
Money, that's it.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Alright, good night.
Good night.
I know.
Good night.
Good night. It's time to go.
I got to make sure that all the woman Elliot is off before I get off. She's not gonna call this.
You're wrong.
Call it back, daughter. Oh, the mayor, oh, it's gone then.
I'm getting rid of it.
Boy, shut it down, shut it down.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.